We'd like to take a photo.
We'll take a photo now, and Shelley, the drinking water in Provo is outstanding.
It is. And would you like to tell us who's here from your family?
Yes, I have my son Tegan, and he works for parks. And then my son Matt and my husband Rick.
Well, I think that we'll do a photo, and then we'd love to have you come up and join for a photo, too. If that's okay.
I wrote a few words.
Oh, you did? No one ever does.
Well, I made a goal to speak in front of City Council this year because I hate public speaking. And so this is fulfilling my goal.
You do it. Here you go. The mic's yours.
So, all right. All right, so I can put myself pushing right now. Okay, too far away. All right, I'm truly honored and humbled to receive this award. I want to express my sincere appreciation to Provo City and Water Resources for this recognition. This award is an indication of the hard work and dedication of many, not just me, but my entire team. I'd like to thank my manager, Dave Torgerson, for his guidance and support, as well as my colleagues for their collaboration and teamwork. This wouldn't have been possible without their support and dedication to their job. I'm grateful for the opportunity to work at Provo City at the water reclamation facility, and I'm committed to continue to contribute to our success.
Right, let's grab a photo.
I'll take this.
Show that off.
All right.
We'll be without the family first, and then we'll bring the family.
Yeah.
Welcome, Gordon.
Do one more.
Okay, right here, I don't need those. All right, let's look down here. And Dave, Dave, come on up. I'm also down. I'm down.
I'm gonna do this here, and then I'm gonna get over that closer. Oh, how's that? Okay.
He's beating.
No, he's not.
In fact, he'll.
Shelley. Can I use something?
So.
Come up. I'd like to be the one for the side, so hopefully. Hopefully, yeah, you know. If we're scared, yeah, we'll see.
Next, we have a presentation recognizing Provo Powerline Crew participants in the Light Up Navajo Initiative.
All right, thank you. I get the privilege and honor to introduce this amazing group of, there was four of them that went down this year, three are here today. And what we're going to do is we're going to, there's a video that tells the whole story. So let's just go straight to the video, and then I'll turn the time over to Energy Director Scott Bunker, and he'll introduce, and we'll take another photo.
For me, I know it's been a great experience for all of the other employees here that have went. A story that was shared with me a few years back was that a lady had told one of the line workers out there that how excited she was to be able to go to the store and get groceries for more than what would fit in a cooler and actually be able to fill up a fridge. And that was really eye opening to me to know that they have never had that, never had that ability to do that.
They were able to get some help down there, and they're going to utilize your time down there, which, I mean, it was great. It was a great experience. I'd like to introduce you to my crew, Brian Grossbeck, Eli Conchor, Braden Walker. They'd like to share an experience they had at the Navajo Nation. I'm very proud of them.
I think it was interesting to see how far these jobs were and how precise they were on every single nut, bolt. I mean, you're talking about driving two and a half hours. If you forget one thing, I mean, that job is at a standstill. So, I mean, how precise they were with every staple, with every inch of wire. I mean, we get down to the last four inches and that'd be perfect amount. I mean, it was pretty mind blowing to see that. Just no waste. No, everything was used 100%.
Yeah, and it's a good reminder that any job can be accomplished, right? You can overcome any obstacle. And those Navajo linemen, they had no quit in them. Kind of, it was just whatever it takes. Get that line to that home, and so it makes you be more creative. Thinking outside the box, where normally in the city, we wouldn't have to think of that. But now you can bring it back home and apply it in areas here within the city.
What makes a good lineman? I think someone that is willing to adapt to the situation and kind of see the whole picture and think several steps ahead is what, to me, makes a good lineman. Kind of see the whole job, see what needs to be done, and make the right calls at the right time.
You'll learn a lot from these Navajo linemen.
I don't think I'll ever be able to forget those guys. They taught me just a lot about being a man and how to overcome adversity, right? I mean, they lived in the craziest, most crazy conditions I've ever seen, and to see those guys how hard they worked is pretty impressive.
I think making a better lineman, like I said, the pride they take in each rap, each bolt, squaring up everything. I know I wanted to bring that back home to the city. And just think about every nut and washer squared up nice, making sure the tails aren't too long, every connection is clean, just basically honing your skills. They have no choice but to make it perfect out there because they run thinner with linemen and everything's so spread out. So it has to be precise. And so I just may be a better lineman to see those little things that I could work on and, I don't know, tighten up.
One of the things I don't think that most of us think about is how you would store food without a refrigerator, and that's what all those people have to do.
Long drives to get firewood.
Yeah.
They're still chopping firewood every day to cook and heat, you know, along with hauling water to their houses. So a lot of work just to kind of live day by day.
Kids can't even do their homework and light, so they have lanterns they light up for them. So kids are doing homework in pitch black darkness with a little teeny lantern next to them. So that's pretty eye opening to see that.
It's just wild to go down there and see that there's so many people that don't have what I consider the basic needs covered. And I'm just grateful that we were able to help people that we were, and I wish we could have stayed longer to to help the other people because I know that, you know, there is those people that we helped, and there's a line of people that are in just as desperate or even more desperate need for those amenities than the ones we helped. So it just, the impact that linemen can make down there on the quality of life for those Indians on the reservation is huge.
Going down, didn't know what to expect, didn't know how I'd feel, but in the end, I didn't want to leave, and I would be ready to sign up next year, go right back down and help. Because we saw what kind of contribution we could make. And it was very rewarding, seeing the emotions on the homeowners, even the power department employees, on how grateful they were that we were there. You could tell it was very genuine, and I'd sign up again and go down.
Most people don't get this opportunity, so I'm glad we do. Because I think that we can go down every year and make a good, do a good thing down there and make a big change.
Yeah. Yeah.
Exactly.
Grateful to the administration that they've supported this project. I think it's been a really important thing to be able to go down and take part of this Light Up the Navajo Nation project. And I hope that the administration and the residents also see that as a positive.
That's very impressive, Mayor.
Yeah, and come on up. We, at the American Public Power Association Convention, we were awarded and recognized. And so it's really fun for all of us, and we're so proud of them and just wanted to spotlight them. Director Bunker?
Yeah, thank you for letting us come tonight, have this opportunity to just to recognize these linemen and what they do. I've worked with Provo Power for 31 years, and one of the things I love so much about linemen is how proud they are of what they do, and they perform their best when things are the worst, and in the worst weather, at the worst time of night, and they show up and do things that most people don't want to do. And so we're grateful for them. This is Elijah Conchar and Braden Walker and Brian Grossbeck, and then Alan Hohn was the foreman that went down with him as well. We're grateful for them, and all that they could do, as you can see, with the tremendous impact, there's 10,000 families still on that reservation without power. And, you know, 40 some other companies went down at the same time, and we're able to hook up several hundred. You know, we hope going forward, we can continue to do this, and not only because it benefits them, but you can see how much it benefits us as well, because we just learned there's so much more outside of ourselves. It's so much more important than sometimes what we think we do. But thank you, guys, so much for your effort. Thank you for your families.
Let's go further.
You sound good.
Do you mind if I sit? Thank you.
Thank you again to Provo Power and to our linemen for that impressive work. Next, we'll begin our period of public comment, as indicated on the screen. A required public hearing will be held for certain agenda items prior to council action. After each such item has been presented, time to comment will be provided for all who wish to speak. For those items that do not require a public hearing, public comment will still be taken. At this time, up to 15 minutes have been set aside for open public comment period, which is intended to allow comment on matters that do not appear on the agenda, but are still limited to topics regarding municipal business or within council purview. During each, during any public comment period, each speaker will generally be limited to two minutes. Due to noticing requirements, no formal action will be taken in this meeting on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Those with comments are invited to approach the podium. You can begin by stating your name and city of residence. Is there any here who would like to offer public comment at this time?
Yes, I am back.
Is that on? Can you? Okay, it sounds like it's on. And then just remind us of your name and city of residence.
My name is Andrew Thompson, lived in Provo for 43 and a half years. I think that something is not quite right here. I have received some emails, although indirectly, in response to some of the issues I have brought up. Okay, number one, what about the utility poles in the middle of the sidewalk? Nothing has been done. Number two, farmer's market, handicap park, nothing has been done. No, it is not acceptable, as the email I received says it is. It is not. We need loading zones, and we need a curb cut so people don't have to go down the middle 100 South to get to a corner. So on many other issues that have never been solved, let me just say, there's one that I was reminded of eight years ago, and it was with a different wheelchair than this. I could make it up to Rock Canyon. I always wanted to go up to Rock Canyon. If you're at the trailhead, it looks great. You got handicap parking space, and you got a handicap bathroom. But the concrete filled steel posts are so close together, nobody in the wheelchair can get through. So why even go there? I don't want to go there to look up the canyon. I want to go up the canyon. I don't think that's asking too much. We've got many other places where we need bus stops to be coordinated better with the UTA, and they always blame you, not me, not themselves. They blame you for not working with it. I would like to know who the person is who's in charge of dealing with UTA. We need to do more. There are so many issues. We need a person to coordinate this. And that's all I have to say right now.
Thank you, Andrew. We'll continue to coordinate that through the city's designated Officer Tara Riddle. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment? Yes, Mike?
Thank you. My name is Mike Roan. I live in Provo. And I'm here to talk about the two letters I've sent to the city council regarding the use of a statement stuffer in a manner that I believe violates the law. And so I'm concerned because both the state and the federal law are very clear on the use of public media and anything that would give one candidate an edge over another candidate in an election time period. I refer specifically to the one I got just a couple of days ago in which one of the candidates refers to themselves as a sewer mayor, and it very much touts that one candidate. It goes to 38,000 homes or residences every month. If it costs a dollar apiece to prepare it, print it, distribute and everything, that's about $200,000 worth of benefit that goes to that one candidate during the next five or six months during the election period. I think that's a violation according to the IRS guidelines that I added in my my second letter, to which I have not received the response either. One of the potential outcomes is not only eliminating that candidate from the election, but also potentially losing the tax exempt status of Provo as a city. That is a specified penalty and outcome by the IRS in Section 501(c)(3). I reached out to a friend of mine who's a retired federal judge who lives several states away. And while he couldn't give me anything that I could use his name in looking at this and reviewing it, he happens to think it's a violation of the law. I hope that we don't get into the same kind of issue with this that we got over that sign next to the medical clinic in North Provo that cost the city hundreds of thousands of dollars a year.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate that. Is there anyone else? Okay, we'll go ahead and take public comment on Zoom. Go ahead and unmute your phone, and you have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Mary Sorenson, and I live in North Provo along Canyon Road. I woke up June 7th and had to get to work, but I felt like I was in the morgue. I could not get out. The 10K starts at Canyon Crest often, and the marathon runs, obviously, down University Avenue. So I can't leave my neighborhood when that run and things are happening. There was no communication this year about road closures. I checked the marathon website. They had no information, so I looked elsewhere. In 2023 and 2024, there was communication via the mayor's Instagram and on city pages. This year, I called both the non-emergency police line and Provo City Customer Service. Both put me on hold for five plus minutes. This shows that, I mean, that there's a lack of communication both internally and externally. Provo must do better. And road closures are a problem, both for me with the Utah Valley Marathon, but also for others when it comes to Freedom Festival. And I feel that the city has a duty to communicate better what roads are going to be closed, when they're going to be closed. And all that we got was a single post less than 24 hours before the race began.
Thank you, Mary. We appreciate your comment and calling in tonight. Thank you. Are there any others? Go ahead, come to the mic. You can just give it to our executive director there at the end. Sure, that will be fine.
And then Paul, you can, but I want to add photos to it. I don't know. I'll figure it out. Okay, so I'm calling about this.
As a reminder, yeah, go to the microphone because we have people online and then state your name and your city of residence.
I'm Cindy Reed. I'm in Provo at 3945 North Canyon Road in District 1. And I'm calling about this property tax notice or notice of moving the utilities. So this year, it's 18 million, and there's five utility areas. And every year I get these, and I look at them and consider them. And the thing is, is there's a lot of things that are upsetting to me this year about this. One, it says it's to keep property taxes low. Since 2020, my property taxes have gone up 61% in four years. So that's not low. Then on the other side, this year, the water rates just went up. So not only are you sweeping off $2.6 million from the water line of that utility, our rates have gone up this year. So you had an extra $2 million there, but you're going to charge us more this year. Because, and that, all of this is going into the general fund. In, the storm drain is a special problem of mine because this year, on last August, the manhole covers all the way down 3950 north blew off in August, and they, all the way down the street, and then from that manhole cover all the way down, and you can see all the new build on 3950 out here, but I don't think the storm drain system has been modified to adjust for all those new houses. They're all coming into 3950, then they come down, they hit Canyon Road. You got a literal, yeah, rushing of water and a lake coming up there. And at the bottom of Canyon Road, 3950, is my house, right here, with all this water and this lake out here. And we built this to, I mean, we spent thousands of dollars for the wall, a drainage system down the north side. Usually, it handles quite a bit of water. The water always goes over the walk there multiple times. In the time we've lived there, probably about 12 times, the water's come over. That's why we have such a fantastic fence. The water pulled up was so high that it washed around.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you. Would you send those photos then via email to our director tomorrow? We appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you for taking time to share that with us. Thank you for the handout, too. We'll watch for those photos. Thank you. Are there any others who would like to participate in public comment? If not, we'll close public comment at this time and begin with, move to our next agenda item, which is an ordinance amending Provo City Code regarding covered parking structures on historic landmark properties. This will be presented by one of our planners, Dustin Wright. Try the other mic, Dustin.
Tess, there we go. Okay. Thank you, Council. This item is one we talked about earlier today in our work meeting. What we're looking at here is a text amendment that an applicant has submitted that will apply to properties that are within the accessory dwelling unit overlay areas or places that those are allowed and will apply for properties that are on the Provo Historic Landmark Register. And it's looking at the parking and covered parking specifically. The applicant has a property that's on the local landmarks register that she would like to have an ADU established on her property. And in going through the process and looking at the different requirements, one of those is that there's covered parking to be able to count parking on the driveway. And on her property, this historic property there currently is not covered parking. And so that's where the issue is to be able to meet that for parking space requirement. So she is requesting a text amendment to remove that requirement for properties that are on the historic register to not have to provide the covered parking structure, but still be able to provide the four parking spaces. We've reviewed this as staff and think this will be a good benefit to properties that are on the historic register to help keep them able to be maintained and have that financial stability. We all know that it's a challenge to keep these properties going. And so finding ways to help with finances like that with an ADU are good, and it's a good incentive that we can help keep those assets in our city. So we are supportive of this. It went to the planning commission, and they forwarded a positive recommendation to the city council as well. So this first slide here is showing that original text that went to the planning commission. Since then, we've sent it through our legal department and have looked at adding a few more changes to that to help meet some of the state requirements we talked about earlier in our work meeting today. And I don't know if we can jump to those slides, but that show kind of the comparison between those two. So this is the one that we would recommend approving tonight. If that's something that you're looking to do, this one has those. This one has those changes that will help uh make the text more clear and help it to meet some of those state requirements. Um, that's all I have. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer those.
Great. Thank you, Dustin. Are there any questions for Dustin? Counselor McKay?
What was the particular house that brought this to light?
Uh, so it's the applicant. It's her property. Um. She said the Hendrickson Mansion. It's on Sixth West and Third South, so it's on the corner property there. It's on our local historic register.
And currently, I think you mentioned in the work session, Dustin, there are forty-seven historic structures in the city.
Uh, there's more than that, but there's about forty-seven that are within areas that allow ADUs.
That's right. Okay. Any other questions for Dustin? Thank you, Dustin. This item is open for public comment. If there are any here who would like to make a comment, you're welcome to approach the podium at this time. Yes, mm hmm. And I'm sorry, I should. You're the applicant, right?
I'm the applicant.
Yes, go go ahead, uh, please, and uh just remind us of your name.
I'm Wendy Holdaway. Um, I bought the Hendrickson Mansion in two thousand fifteen. I was absolutely enchanted by her history. Her name is Isabella at the Pottery Factory. And in spite of an inspection, a pre-sale inspection, it missed everything from a failed roof that allowed moisture to turn part of the adobe walls to slurry, which meant that the roof was only held up by the roof joists and a thin layer of outer brick, which was corrected at great expense by the same masons that rebuilt the Provo Tabernacle to a collapsed sewer line to the street that unfortunately had the junction box under my neighbor's carport. From top to bottom, I have slowly restored my beautiful Victorian home. I love this house and am committed and fighting to return her to her former glory. I am asking the Provo City Council for the change to the Civil Code so I can better utilize my historic property as a multi-generational house as it was intended from its inception without altering its historical setting. Please help me restore and preserve my Isabella. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Are there any questions for the applicant? Yes, Counselor Bogdan.
So in order to make an ADU, you'd have to have an external entrance point, right?
It 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 was always billed as a multi-generational house. There are two entrances already. The it's passed every code and every inspection. There are two separate properties within the same building from when it was built in um eighteen eighty-six. It has the four off-street parking. The only last tiny little sticking point is whether we have a covered carport, which quite frankly would look very strange with historical house, and we don't have the setbacks to build a garage. I would just go ahead and build a Victorian garage. But um because the city code is very specific, you need twenty point five feet from the the house to the neighbor's lot, and we have nineteen. And so I would rather not have a acrylic vinyl carport. I think it would really ruin the historical setting of my Isabella.
Why not ask for a variance instead of a code change?
Um, I've asked and uh asked for several things, and they felt that this was the most um, the planning committee felt that this was the most expeditious way to to follow through. Um, I'll do a variance. I don't care, but they felt that that probably would not be granted.
A variance for a Victorian garage?
Um, for a covered parking, it would be a garage, but the problem is the setbacks.
Right, but wouldn't a variance, if you ask for a variance, wouldn't that a variance so that the setbacks weren't an issue? Wouldn't that be a thing?
I don't know.
So are you altering or modernizing the inside of your home at all?
Um, because it's on the historical registry, the outside must be exactly the way it is. Um, it is modernized in the fact that we have five bathrooms now, and when it was built, they had no bathrooms.
Okay.
We have two kitchens, fridges, and that's certainly um, a modern modernization. But um as far as moving walls or changing ceiling heights, I've tried to make her look exactly as she did within those parameters as she did in eighteen eighty-six. It's very important to me that it be should be restored and not just modernized.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
Are there any here who would care to make a public comment related to this proposed ordinance? If not, we'll close public comment and invite any council input or discussion or questions. Counselor McKay?
Thank you so much for restoring that beautiful home. I think that's wonderful.
Anyone else? All right, we'll call for a vote then on this proposed uh ordinance. And I will mention also that Counselor Hoben has joined us online. I'm sorry, Counselor Handley has joined us online. Counselor Hoben is right next to me. Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
And Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes by a vote of seven zero. Thank you again, Wendy. Next, we have an implied motion on a resolution approving the execution of an inter-local cooperation agreement to authorize Provo City's participation in the Utah Valley Home Consortium. This will be presented by our RDA Director, Melissa McNally.
Good evening. So I'm asking for a resolution for Provo to participate in the Utah Valley Home Consortium. Um, this is um funding that we get from HUD for Affordable Housing Solutions. The consortium is an agreement that we entered into um years ago, and other um they're called entitlements to be used throughout the county participate with us so that we can spend home dollars in their uh cities as well. So um this would be between Provo City, Utah County, Lehigh City, Oran City, and Eagle Mountain is joining us uh in the consortium this year. Uh, it would go into effect um October first uh is when is when it officially renews with HUD. Um, and Provo City has the distinction of being the lead entity, which means we're have all the responsibility for reporting and um all the regulatory uh requirements with with HUD. So um, do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Melissa? Thank you, Melissa.
Thanks.
This item is also available for public comment. If there are any here who would like to um speak to this item, you can approach the podium at this time. If not, we'll bring the item back to council for discussion. Any um discussion or clarifying questions from council members? Seeing none, we'll go ahead with a vote then on this resolution. Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
And Counselor Garrett, yes. So that resolution passes by a vote of seven zero. Thank you, Melissa. Next, we have an ordinance amending Provo City Code regarding certain employee retirement programs. This will be presented by our Human Resources Director, Daniel Softly.
Good evening. Uh, I am requesting a change to uh four oh four one hundred of Provo City Code uh to enhance supplemental retirement contributions for Provo City employee groups that do not participate in Social Security. Uh, just as a as a quick background, uh again for yourselves and for the public, uh, Social Security, which is formerly known as Old Age Survivors Disability Insurance or OASDI, as in the proposed language change, is a federal retirement savings program uh that is largely mandated across the United States. Uh, there is a provision, though, that allows state and local governments to opt out of Social Security if they have an alternative retirement plan, at least equal to uh Social Security. Uh, this was uh a part of that was allowed years ago. Uh, so decades ago, Provo City uh opted out of Social Security for sworn police officers and firefighters, and then all other employees uh remain in the Social Security plan. Um, our current language, uh, the one that I'm proposing to change tonight, uh, in that it says that Provo City agrees to match up to two percent of what full-time employees and elected officials contribute to their supplemental 401K. That's a voluntary program. This amount is consistent with what other agencies who participate, and then when I say other agencies, other counties and cities, uh, what they offer to their employees uh as a supplemental uh 401K contribution. We've done some market data research over the last several years, though, that shows that agencies who do not participate in Social Security, otherwise they've opted out, provide a median supplemental retirement contribution that is higher. Uh, that amount is actually four percent. Uh, so the proposed ordinance change would allow Provo City employees who do not participate in the Social Security program, namely sworn police officers and sworn firefighters, uh, to receive up to a four percent match for their 401K. Uh, this is a market-based proposal uh based on our desire to remain competitive with uh similarly structured agencies.
Great, thank you, Daniel. Any questions? For Daniel? All right, thank you. Thank you, Daniel. If there if there's anyone here who would like to make a comment, this item is available for public comment. You can approach the podium. Seeing none, we'll move to council discussion. Any council member comments or discussion? All right, we'll go ahead with a vote then on this proposed ordinance amendment. Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Thank you. So that ordinance amendment passes by a vote of seven zero. Thank you, Daniel. Next, we have a public hearing regarding management salary increases, also presented by HR Director Daniel Softly.
Uh, this item uh is a public hearing to satisfy Utah State Code uh ten three eight one eight that states that before a governing body can adopt a a final budget or a final amended budget that includes a compensation increase for an executive municipal officer, there needs to be a public hearing. Uh, per the code, an executive municipal officer includes the chief administrative officer, department heads, assistant department heads, and division directors. Uh, so I'm here to announce that as part of the proposed budget uh for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, all executive employees are budgeted to receive a two and a half percent merit raise that is consistent with what our regular employees are scheduled to do as part of their step raises, and then also the COLA, uh, which is currently in the budget at two and a half percent. Uh, a full list of all of our uh executive positions by division and department is always published on our website at provo.org under the Human Resources Pay uh page for uh pay and compensation.
Great, thank you, Daniel. And you and these, you mentioned these proposed increases are currently in the fiscal twenty-six budget.
Correct.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Daniel? Counselor Christensen?
Daniel, I think it would be helpful for you to talk a little bit about what makes this critical uh at a time when there's um a lot of increases in terms of city expenses. Um, this seems like a significant increase. Uh, what's the value to citizens for making this kind of uh pay increase for management?
Well, all of our pay adjustments and compensation decisions are all designed to not only attract but retain highly qualified people to to run the city matters, to be experts in their various areas. Um, in order to do so, we have twenty-five other very close agencies that would love to take a lot of our talent uh and to use that expertise and years and years of experience in in their areas. And so we do an annual compensation study. Um, and we look at all of the other agencies around us, and we base our uh pay decisions on that, uh, very detailed look at what similar positions are receiving. Uh, this is, I would say that we have a very conservative approach, but also one that allows us to be quite competitive. We tend to go to the median. We don't want to lead. We don't want to lag, but we want to be able to keep our people, particularly at the key executive level.
Yeah. Thank you. Daniel, what is um the current turnover rate among employees in general? Uh, how how does it compare to the marketplace and among management?
Uh, next, I heard you. Did you say turnover?
Turnover, yes, uh, turnover rate.
Yeah. Um, at the management level, uh, it's very, we're very fortunate. We have very few turnover. Uh, when we do, it's typically a retirement. Um, at overall city turnover, yeah, we average about ten percent, uh, which is, I would consider normal. That's all retirement, though. I mean, all turnover points, people who retired, passed away, gone to other employment. If they come and then they leave, we we count that amongst our full-time turnover. Our voluntary turnover, which is more reflective of whether or not people are leaving for other agencies, that is closer to about five uh five percent annually. And that's something that Human Resource has been tracking for, you know, several decades. And that's basically where we're at.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Daniel? Thank you, Daniel. Okay. How many employees do we have?
We have seven hundred full-time employees. And at our highest point during the summer months where we have seasonal employees, we're upwards of nine hundred of those. So we have about sixteen hundred at our high point.
Great, thank you.
But to clarify, that was five percent, not five people.
No, 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 five percent.
Okay.
Right.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
That's our voluntary. That's correct. We we turn over about sixty to seventy uh full-time employees annually, which is around the ten percent of seven hundred.
Thank you. Thank you, Daniel. This item is also open for public comment. If there are any who would like to um speak, you can approach the podium. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and invite any additional council discussion or comments. Counselor Bogdan?
So my niece is getting married, and I went to a bridal shower with my sisters and my aunt on Saturday. And one thing that my sister kept on bringing up is the problems they're having in her city. And I looked at her and I said, she was saying how the whole city is upset with the mayor and the city council, and they wanted a big turnover. And the problems with their city was actually more with the staff. And I looked at her and I said, well, exactly how is that your city council's problem? It's ran with the city manager and with with people that are in your city, not necessarily with the council and appropriations and things like that. And and it made me really appreciate Provo City and our employees. I think it's really important that we keep competitive pay here in Provo so that we don't have those kinds of issues. If we pay them well, we get what we pay for. If we pay them so they're getting poached, are good employees, and they're going to go to someplace else. And I would hate for us to be a city like my sister's city where everybody's dissatisfied with everything that's going on. And there's a lot of things going on within her city that just are causing a whole community to have a huge change and want a huge change. So I'm very supportive of this to keep the good employees that we have, because we have some really good employees that I it would be a tragedy for us to lose them. They have a lot of experience, and we are very lucky as a city to have what we have.
Thank you, Counselor Bogdan. Any other discussion? All right, we have uh, that item was presented for the purposes of a public hearing, and we have been able to Uh, that item was presented for the purposes of a public hearing and we have been able to accomplish that. Thank you, Daniel. Next, we have an ordinance adopting a public safety impact fee combined. Table and amending city code in reference to it. This will be presented by our city attorney, Brian Jones.
Chair Garrett, council members. This is an item that we've been discussing um, on and off and for a couple of months. We had a recent um, code change a while back where in order to reflect more accurately the way state law talks about impact fees. We combined our police impact fee and our fire impact fee from our prior impact fee study. Into one public safety impact fee. Um, we have sensed that in the budget that you have, that you're going to get to in a couple of uh, items, agenda items here. One of the parts of the budget ordinance is to approve the consolidated fee schedule. There is a, there is a chart that's been added to that consolidated fee schedule that is. That shows the combined public safety fee. And again, this is not a new fee. We didn't add the fee. We didn't, we didn't add a new fee. We didn't raise the fee. All we did is we took. The fire fee and the, and the police fee from the prior impact fee study and combined them, added them together into one public safety impact fee. However, there's a, there's a specific section of the code that talks about our impact fees and what their maximum limits will be. And because of all of these changes we've made, this is an ordinance that just updates that section of code. To talk about the public safety impact fee by the right name. That's, that's really all we're doing. I don't know if we can put the ordinance up on the screen. Um, so all we're really doing is just reorganizing this impact fee calculation section. And just adding a new, a new sentence about public safety facilities. Because the actual impact fee analysis and impact fee facilities plan that's referred to in subsection one didn't use that name. So that's all we're doing. May I answer any questions?
Great, thank you, Brian. Are there any questions for Brian? All right, thank you, Brian. If there's any here who would like to speak to this item, you can approach the podium during this open public comment. If not, we'll close public comment and continue with council discussion. Any questions or comments, counselors? All right. We'll call for a vote then on this ordinance. Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett? Yes. Counselor McKay?
Yes.
And Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That motion passes by a vote of seven zero. Well, we're actually going to move to item uh, nine now. Thank you, Kevin. Um, reversing the order of these next two items. Um, in order to have the public hearing first, a public hearing regarding the annual disclosure of funds transferred. From the utility enterprise fund to other funds for the upcoming budget. This will be presented by our finance director, Dan Follett. Hello, Dan, welcome.
Thank you. Uh, this notice was sent out to all ratepayers uh, over the uh, past month or month and a half. And so I'll just read a brief portion of it. State law requires that Provo City provide an annual disclosure of funds. Transferred from utility enterprise funds to other funds. And historically, Provo has budgeted for the transfer of utility fund revenues to the general fund. As a dividend to Provo taxpayers as a result of the taxpayers' investment in the city utility infrastructure. These funds are used each year to help cover the costs of important city services like police, fire, parks and recreation. And other city functions. The utility transfer, together with franchise fees, helps keep property taxes in Provo low. Uh, if city utility services were provided by private utility owners, these dividends would instead be paid to investor owners. Uh, because Provo taxpayers are the investor owners, these dividends are used to offset what otherwise would be. Significant increase in property tax rates. The transfer total sixteen million, three hundred and sixty-two thousand. Four hundred and twenty-five dollars in the proposed twenty twenty-six budget. In addition to that, it's more cost-effective and operationally efficient for certain administrative functions such as legal. Human resources, information technology and finance to be administered on a citywide basis. Transfers from the funds receiving the benefit of these administrative services to the general fund. Totals uh, one million, seven hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars in the proposed twenty twenty-six budget. And, and you can see there's a table there. Um, I, it's not on the screen, I apologize, but. But you can see the transfers and what fund they come from. Uh, and uh, the first column is the transfer and the second is. Uh, the cost of covering the uh, administrative overhead benefits that they receive. The total of those transfers is eighteen million, seventy-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars. Uh, and it's uh, the city is required to hold a public hearing regarding these transfers. Um, and I believe that's going to happen next.
Thank you, Dan. And maybe just for um, relative comparison, could you tell us how this? Transfer total compares to other uh, fiscal years? Last year, for example, or the year before?
Um, I don't have the exact dollar amounts, um, but in terms of the transfer total. Um, it's up uh, approximately uh, one and a half percent on a year-over-year basis.
Okay. Great, thank you. Questions for Dan? Yes, Counselor Bogdan?
I'm gonna address some of this public comment. Okay, so Dan. I want you to answer me how this transfer helps to keep property taxes in Provo low.
Okay, um, if uh, if all of this. Essentially sixteen point three six two million dollars uh, was paid through property taxes. Uh, that would be paid by only the properties that pay property tax. So in other words. Um, any of the entities in Provo that are not subject to property tax, which. Uh, include any church-owned properties. Uh, it would include uh, any county-owned properties. It would include any federal-owned properties. It would include any state-owned properties, uh, state hospital that's here. Federal buildings that are here, education, uh, facilities that are within Provo.
The hospital?
The hospital, yes. None of those would pay. And so in order to provide the same level of services, police, fire, parks and rec, et cetera. Um, the rest of the properties, the, well, the properties that are subject to property tax. Would have to bear that burden. And so that would significantly increase uh, the percentage of, or the, the percentage and. The total dollar amounts that those uh, property tax-paying properties would pay, if that makes.
It makes perfect sense to me, but can you remind me what the percentage of property in Provo is non-taxable?
Um, I, I do not have that off the top of my head.
I've heard fifty percent, I've heard fifty-two percent.
It ranges between, it's like forty-eight to fifty-two percent.
So roughly half.
So if this money were to come from the residents, it would only come from fifty, or maybe forty-eight percent of people within Provo. Having it come this way, we gain that money through everybody that's here in Provo. Okay, so the other question I have is.
And I would just mention that everybody utilizes the services that the city provides, police, fire, et cetera.
County?
Yes.
Federal?
Yes.
State, the hospital, educational services. They all utilize police and fire, which is a, a part of our general fund, right? Um. Now, do we have anywhere that tax breakdown of how much is paid to the school district and how much is paid to the actual city?
I don't have that with me, but I can tell you that the largest portion of property tax uh, goes to the school district. Uh, and the school board manages that, is responsible for that.
So seven percent basically is what the mayor is telling me. Seven percent of our property tax bill actually comes back to the city. And the school district gets what, sixty, seventy percent of that?
That range, yeah.
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 Yeah, Counselor Rogdon, so sixty, roughly sixty cents of every dollar in property tax revenue goes, that Provo residents pay, goes to the school district. Um, and then that breakdown of Provo City is, is, to the mayor's point, roughly seven cents of every dollar. Um, and then it's broken down further between the library bonds, um, library comma. Bonds for, for buildings, um, and then for the general fund.
Thank you very much, Justin. And as far as some of these like storm drains filling, um, our wonderful public works director is in the back. That's who I would invite you to have a conversation with because we don't have those answers. Thank you so much, Dan. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Dan? Thank you. Thank you, Dan. This is a um, a public hearing, so this item is now open for public comment. If any would like to. Speak to the item, you can approach the podium at this time. Yeah, come up to the podium, come up to the podium. And, and Wendy, we're going to make you state your name again, city of residence. For the record.
Cindy Reed, I live, the resident state?
Uh, no, your city of residence.
Oh, I'm Provo Canyon Road.
Right.
So I'm converted by what the whole thing, because also you are actually able to um, obtain funding. From all the students who come in and live and use the city services. And yet would never have to contribute any money into that. And that's a huge amount of draw of money into the system. So I'm hereby converted. I'll suck it up with my sixty-one percent property tax increase, but I still want the storm drain thing figured out, Sam.
And I want to warn you, Wendy, that the school board is increasing taxes largely this year. So you will see a significant increase.
I've already seen it year over year happening.
Yeah, and it's ugly again. It's going to be ugly again. But we weren't, you know, yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Wendy.
He, yeah, he can adjust your storm drain questions.
Are there any others who would like to make public comment? If not, we'll close public comment and invite. Any discussion from the council? Great, thank you. This item also was uh, posted only for a public hearing. Yes, Counselor McKay?
I just want to say that I was very cognizant of this increase. I talked to the directors. Um, and discussed it with staff and I feel good about it and particularly. Um. Energy, I'm on that board, so talking with them and. It, it, as Becky talked about earlier, as far as taking care of our employees, that's one of the best, that's one of the reasons they support it is such that. Their departments are taken care of and their employees are taken care of. And so it's a win-win in that way, how, and how the money is used. And um, like. Was mentioned, in private companies, the money does go to, you know, the shareholders and stuff. So. That is um, been interesting, you know, that is the equivalent in private business.
Thank you, Counselor McKay. Counselor Christensen?
I also think it might be helpful to know that while we approve these fairly quickly. We've been through hours and hours and hours of presentations from the different departments, going through budgets. We've been doing this for three months. And so if you want to listen to the tapes, we've got our, it's all taped. It's all on YouTube. Uh, you can listen to all of the same presentations we have. So when you don't hear a lot of questions from us, it doesn't mean we're asleep at the switch. It means we've gone through this so much. That unless we're voicing uh, uh, an opposition, we're in agreement with what's usually the. Comments and suggestions we've made have been incorporated into the budgets that you see. So just a process observation.
Thank you, Counselor Christensen. Anyone else? All right, we'll move then to. Uh, the next item, item nine, which on the agenda is. Is item eight. This is an ordinance adopting a budget for Provo City for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five. And ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six in the amount of three hundred and nineteen million, six hundred and seventy-five thousand, five hundred and eight dollars. This will be presented also by. By Kelsey in, in John. So John's not here tonight. Okay. In John's absence. Thank you, Kelsey. And welcome back from your leave.
Thank you. It's good to be back. Um. We're excited to be at this point, uh, in support of what uh, Counselor Christensen just said, this budget. That you're um, hopefully adopting tonight is a culmination of a six-month effort to put together a city budget that. Is balanced, incorporates council priorities and we're grateful to you and the mayor, of course, and um, all of the departments for. All of the effort put into this budget. So just so the public is aware, uh, the council did receive the budget on May sixth. And that was after a lot of presentations about the budget before that. So May sixth is when the tentative budget was presented to the council. And then two weeks ago on June third, there was the first public hearing required by the state. Um, that was held. And then tonight is the second and final public hearing on the budget. So this will be opened up as a public hearing. And then the ordinance that would be adopted um, covers several different points. Um, the first is. The ordinance would adopt the tentative budget and its amendments as the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget for the city. It would adopt the certified property tax rates, which the tax amounts haven't changed. It's just the rates need to be adopted each year. And so there's not a property tax increase in conjunction with this budget this year. And the third thing that the ordinance would do would be adopt the pay range table. And then the fourth thing would be adopt the consolidated fee schedule with updated fees. So are there any questions about that?
Any questions for Kelsey?
It's an awful lot of work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelsey. We'll now begin the second of two required public hearings on this proposed budget. And so we'll open public comment at this time. If there are any here who would like to make a comment on the proposed fiscal year budget, you can approach the podium. If not, we'll close public comment and bring the item back to the council for discussion. Counselor McKay?
All right, I was traveling. Last council, um, with my family and due to a very quick process and. Bad internet on my end and things I couldn't control, I was not able to really talk, so I apologize for that. But um. I've, I'm good with the budget as far as, there were things I was concerned about, but I've looked into them and I'm happy with the budget as is. But we, but as of the vote from the last working meeting, you adopted the three point. Five?
Three.
No, three point, three point three percent as opposed to the two point five. And my issue with the water that we've adopted that is in this budget that we're looking to approve. Is the severity of the tier. I, we need tiered, I'm fine with tiered. Um, but I. Just want to talk a bit more about. Some issues that I have with that. Um. It is. The, so I've, today we had our meeting about increasing impact fees. For RDLs and business licenses, sorry, impact fees, but RDL numbers and um, business license numbers. And it was a very detailed presentation. You know, we had percentages of exactly how much employee time and the exact money and how. You know, we got to an end result number. It was very clear and understandable and I knew exactly why we were getting to that number. And that's how it's been with most of the things that we have done. But I feel like this water discussion. We got information on why we need more money for infrastructure. We can go look at our capital improvements projects and see why, what we need to do. And that easily translates to, yes, we need more money. But the decision that, or the implication that um. We. Larger residential lots. Are the problem in the city and they are the reason we have such a large, large system. And that they create the max infrastructure that we need and that they are the straw that broke the camel's back has never made any sense to me logically. Um, the largest, I mean, when we talk about the water resources being used in the city, right? The largest ones are going to be the city as far as parks, sports complexes, you know, all of our buildings, um, the school district, BYU. Um, and like golf courses. I mean, those are by far where the water is going. The residential. The residential, then there's also commercial on top, all the commercial on top of that, but the residential really is a small piece of that pie. And then you look at larger lots, and that's even a smaller piece of pie, they're usually older homes, you know, many get subdivided and made smaller as they get redeveloped and infill and everything. And so it makes no sense to me logically that we're gonna punitively hit the larger lots because they are the problem. Um, I've been told that, so they're the straw that broke the camel's back, that was one reason, and then the other one was the, that, um, they make irregular use between summer and winter. Well, everything makes irregular use between summer and winter. Um, I guess maybe condos wouldn't, but they do still have an H O A where their land is doing it. And commercial is still gonna be more in the summer, less in the winter, BYU, city, all of, all the same things, so that doesn't make sense to me. And, um, we all know water is valuable. I remember when I knocked doors, um, four years ago, it was, it didn't matter the socioeconomic that you were talking to, it didn't matter what part of town, everybody cared about water. Everybody was conscious of it, everybody knew it was valuable, and everybody was careful how they used it. And, um, at that time, I had spoke to the work, Water Works, Public Works Director Dave Decker, and I knew that our water use had been going down. So I went and checked in today on what our current water use is. Now, I know counselors had looked at an email that was about Salt Lake and how their water use is going up, and so they're looking at ways to try and adjust that. Now, we have in the past only done education, right? Education, 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 to try and make sure that people are using water wisely. So the last three years, our water has stayed completely flat. While our population has increased, but our water use has remained flat. Three years ago, we were receiving two million more dollars for water, people were, like, we were got two million more in revenue for water than we are getting now, um, it's not increasing. People are cognizant. There's also another kind of attitude we've been talking about that, like, suddenly you water your grass and it disappears, like, it's just gone. That's not how water works, like, it's like we need like a basic science lesson. Like, water goes through the water cycle, it, it evaporates, it causes rain, I mean, there's a whole, I could go into a whole, I have a whole thing here. Like pages on the science of it, but I'm not gonna bother you with that. But it matters, we need the water cycle, we need to water our grass, we need to not have just dirt and rocks and heat. Um, I used to live in another part of town over in Foothill, and my husband and my family, and I love to walk in that neighborhood. Everyone had a park strip, everyone had trees, it was just lovely, it was cooler, there was shade. Um, people kept the yards nice, it was just lovely, and we walked a lot when we lived there. We've moved, we moved five years ago to where I grew up, on more than northeast area, over by Cindy, thirty-nine fifty. And we don't have park strips, and it's hotter, and there aren't the trees. And do you know what, it's not as lovely to walk around, it's just not. And there's a quality of life issue, and I'm really concerned with this punitive action that we're gonna have people that just, we already see it, we already see where areas of town where rocks are just replaced for the grass, and we just have trees dying, and none of that's good, the amount, I mean, it's amazing that God created these trees that sequester and, sequest- sequester emissions, that's amazing. And every grass, tree, bush, they do that, it makes a huge difference, and we worry so much about emissions and congestion and all the things, air quality, and it does matter, and I wanna promote that, and I never want that to be sacrificed. And that brings up another thought in regards to, there's a cost of growth, right? You think of these older lots that may be bigger, they are older though, they're not, they're like twenty-five years old, fifty years old, eighty years old, these are old lots. I know Cindy's lot is really old, um, these are old lots that that have been around a long time, and thousands of units have been built since they were there. There's a, they, they lost some value, right? There's more traffic, there's more congestion, there's more, there's more air quality issues. There's other things they don't like, there's a cost always to growth. And saying that the cost, thousands of units later, is still these larger lots, is just so illogical to me. I just, no one's explained it to me in a way that makes sense. And, um, I don't think doing anything punitively is okay, we do need to get more revenue. We do need to take care of our infrastructure, but catastrophizing it and, um, vilifying grass and I, I just, it doesn't sit well with me, I have a huge issue with it. Um, the facts aren't there to justify doing this punitively. This has nothing to do with conservation, we're not looking at how much actually someone uses. You can have someone in a single-family home that's wasting tons of water, and then you got someone in a big lot who's conserving way more, their use per acre is significantly better, but that's not gonna be reflected in this pricing. It's not gonna be reflected in, um, what they're paying, so if we really cared about the conservation point, we would be actually looking if they're conserving and paying attention to that, but we're not. Um, so I don't know, those are just some of my thoughts, and yeah, I've spent a lot of time looking at numbers and looking at people's lots and doing the math, and I have no problem with tiers, we need tiers, I have no problem with giving more money to our infrastructure, I would give five percent to our infrastructure. But I care about that the tiers are just more basic and not too high, and we have improved, and the three point three is much better than where we started. Where we started was utterly insane, and like the graph was like this. And I don't, so we're in a better place, but, um, I'm good with the entire budget, but I will vote no if it's at the three point three percent, just on the, um, just all the issues that are with this, that I have a, I have an issue with.
Thank you, Counselor McKay, so, so you're, uh, you favored the two point five percent increases opposed to three.
I would like to do a five percent increase revenue, but I think going to jumping to tiers is a lot more complicated, it's not a simple equation. And I think the mayor was really responsible and wise in landing on the two point five, and we can go, then we got the tiers done, that's the biggest step, I think, to get done. And with those tiers, we can easily move to general increases as we need to yearly to get to the goals that we have.
For infrastructure improvement.
Yep, yep.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor McKay, others? Counselor Hoben.
First of all, I agree with, um, Counselor McKay's thoughts, and I was supportive of, I can't remember which option it was, but it was, um, was it option four? Thank you, Craig, I was supportive of option four, um. But I'm not gonna make a motion, cuz I, you know, lost that battle, but in any case, that's, that's my preference. I did have a question, though, on the urban farming piece, Brian. At this point, right now, the urban farming piece, it says it's at the, um, discretion of the ah, Water Resources Director can make exemptions for customers who participate in or, in urban farming. So that's, as far as I'm aware, that's all it says right now.
Well, that's just, that's a draft policy, um, that's just in, under consideration. I actually think, uh, I've advised the Public Works Department that that's actually gonna require an ordinance change. Um, that because the council is actually setting the rates, I think the council has to approve the exemptions to it. But these rates don't go into effect until September first. Um, so, you know, the, the bud- the, the budget is due now, there is a requirement in state law that there is a policy in place, uh, regarding, uh, the urban farming, as you said. And so my, um, my counsel to the Public Works Department is that they need to bring back an ordinance defining what those exemptions are before September first.
Okay, so, I guess my concern is, well, first of all, I like the idea of an urban farming exemption, cuz it might help some people who do have those larger lots and use it for things like fruit trees and things like that. Um, I guess, so the nuance that we have to have it in there does complicate things a little bit because cuz my thought was gonna be like, it's not advisable to leg- to put that in legislation, it's just so open-ended, it leaves a lot of exposure to our, our director, that, you know, like, people coming to him and there's no criteria around which he can make a decision, and then also, as far as who qualifies, and then also what the exemption will be, right? And that's like, a lot of exposure and a lot of risk there, that, you know, oh, we gave this exemption to this person, but not this person, and, you know.
Exactly, well, and that's why I think, so, again, because this is such early stages, I, my recollection, Jimmy can correct me if I'm wrong, but Jimmy and I kinda had this conversations, I think the whole thing just got put on hold while they were working on rates and tiers. That, that policy, I don't, is that in the materials?
Yeah, it's in the materials.
That would not be what I recommend the ordinance look like when the ordinance comes back, I agree exactly with what you said, there must, there must be criteria.
I, I think, I don't think the plan is to keep this as the, you know, the main thing, but, so, we have to have something in there in order to be compliant, when do we have to be compliant by?
Well, the compliance date, so the, the bill, the state bill was effective May seventh, but, but again, our rates don't go into, go into effect until September first, so I think as long as the exemption is in place before the rates go into effect, I think we're compliant.
You think we can get it done by?
Yeah, I do, yeah, I mean.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, you thought it was advisable to move forward with something so open-ended that leaves, you know, so many question marks, but.
Well, I don't, I don't think we are moving forward with that policy, and this, I mean, that's not part of the budget ordinance.
No, no, but if September hits and we haven't made a decision, it is, right, isn't it?
Well.
It's in there. You see what I'm saying?
Well, it's not, I mean, it's only in your materials, it's not, it's not an adopted policy, I mean, that document is just a draft, that document in, doesn't have any legal bearing.
Are we sure, I, I don't, I'd have to look at where it was, was in there, but.
Well, I'm su- I'm sure it's not in the budget, because the bu- the only thing in the budget ordinance is the, are the exhibits, which are the consolidated fee schedule and the budget number, so it's not part of the budget, so you're not approving that policy today by approving the budget ordinance.
Okay.
But yes, the policy needs, we need, we need to have the policy in place, and it's just a matter of.
Okay, so it's not, it's not anywhere in that's official or legal or.
Right, you're not approving that by any vote that's being taken tonight.
Okay. Okay, well, just wanted to make sure. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Hoben, uh, others? Counselor Handley, we're aware that it is three AM where you are, you haven't fallen asleep, right?
I'm, I'm as chipper as it, as it comes.
Do you, do you have any, uh, comment or, um, question before we move on?
No, I'm, I'm very happy with this process, um, and very happy with this budget, and, um, you know, I, I, I've already expressed my thoughts about water rates, uh, which I, I appreciate that uh, Counselor McKay didn't have an opportunity to fully, um, express herself on that, and, um, but, but I feel like, you know, we've, we kinda voted on that, so I, I don't, I don't see a need to, to go on and, on about that. So I, I, I will leave it at that.
Great, thank you, Counselor Handley, anyone else? All right, we'll move ahead with a vote then, on the, um, proposed budget ordinance. Counselor Bogdan.
Yes.
Counselor Hoben.
No.
Counselor Whipple.
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes, Counselor McKay.
No.
Counselor Christensen.
Yes.
Counselor Handley.
Yes.
So the budget ordinance passes by a vote of five to two, thank you. If there's no objection, we'll adjourn the Provo Municipal Council and reconvene as the Stormwater Service District Governing Board by unanimous consent. In order to address the next item, which is Stormwater Service District Business, a resolution adopting a budget for the Provo City Stormwater Service District in the amount of three million, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. This will be presented to us by Andrea Wright, one of our budget analysts.
Good evening, now this is, we're required to have two public hearings, we had the first public hearing for the Stormwater Service District budget in the amount of three million, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six. First public hearing was June third, and tonight is the second, and then it can be adopted. Are there any questions?
Questions for Andrea?
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. This item is open for public comment, if there's anyone here who would like to make a comment on the proposed Stormwater Service District budget, they can come to the podium. If not, we'll come back to the council for board, come back to the board for board discussion. Any comments or questions? Okay, great. We'll call for a vote then on the budget resolution for the Provo City Stormwater Service District, Counselor Hoben.
Yes.
Counselor Whipple.
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes, Counselor McKay.
Yes.
Counselor Christensen.
Yes.
Counselor Handley.
Yes.
And Counselor Bogdan.
Yes.
Thank you, that budget resolution passes by a vote of seven zero. We'll now adjourn the Stormwater Service District Governing Board and reconvene as the RDA Governing Board by unanimous consent. And pass to the RDA Chair, Rachel Whipple.
I know, the baton just goes back and forth. All right, we have an implied motion on a resolution adopting a budget for the Redevelopment Agency of Provo City for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six in the amount of one million, four hundred and eighty-eight, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars. This will be presented by Andrea Wright, our budget analyst.
Thank you again, so this is the second public hearing for this item, of the resolution to adopt the budget for the Redevelopment Agency for the fiscal year FY twenty-six, in the amount of one million, four eighty-eight, seven ninety-one, I kinda feel like I'm on repeat for you guys. Um, so the first one was June third, and then the second one is tonight, and we'll have the public hearing, and then hopefully you guys will adopt it. Any questions?
Are there any board questions for Andrea? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now open this item for public comment. All right, I see no public comment, so we'll close the public comment and open it for board discussion. And there, do you have, no, no, she's just preparing to vote, all right. Um, well, in that case, we will call for a vote on the implied motion. So, Whipple is yes, Garrett.
Yes.
McKay.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Handley.
Yes.
Bogdan.
Yes.
Hoben.
Yes.
All right, that vote is seven zero, and it passes unanimously. If there is no objection, we will now adjourn the RDA Governing Board by unanimous consent.
And that's the conclusion of our council meeting, too.
We're done, congratulations, you made it.